Commission meeting, Mr. Peckins, would you do the roll call, please?
Gassen, Hauser.
Here.
Bixson.
Here.
Bachman.
Here.
Klauser.
Here.
Kenjuk.
Here.
Lloyd.
Yeah.
Murphy.
Here.
Stone.
Okay, we have a quorum, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go right to line item number three, public comment, is there anyone who would like to make a comment about a item that is not on the agenda, please come up to the lectern? Okay, Rose, anyone online?
No one's online.
Okay, done having been heard, we will go to number four, approval of the minutes. Consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 3rd, 2024.
So move.
Motion by the mayor?
Support.
Support by Mr. Lord, discussion, Mr. Peckins, the roll call, please.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klauser.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we will now turn to line item number five, this is a public hearing. It's consideration of 107 East Second Street, this is a request for payment in lieu of parking requirements, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners, at our last meeting, we set a public hearing, I think, Mr. Lord, you might not have been here, and we'll have the petitioner come up and talk a little bit about what he's doing, but someone, he moved into, made a new coffee shop in the old I Chillin' space, and because we wanted him to have tables and chairs and make it a little more full service, which he ended up doing, then he would be short one parking space, he was grandfathered in as a retail space before, by him changing it to technically a restaurant, it became one space short, so we set the public hearing for tonight. Gentlemen's here that owns the restaurant, if you'd like to come up, introduce himself, and tonight is the public hearing.
Sure, okay, sir, come on up to the lectern and state your name, please.
Hello, good evening, my name's Laban Odisho, I am the owner of Shuttlehead Cafe.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, good, how are you?
Good, okay, so you know why you're here this evening?
Yes.
And you're requesting parking in lieu of one space, correct, Mr. Banda?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so, you know anything you want to tell us about the business very briefly?
You're on TV, so you can tell people.
Yes, tell your story, this is free advertising.
Perfect, I'm always looking for that.
There you go, you got it.
Yeah, so we are a franchise, we're based in Dubai, this is our third location in Michigan, actually. We also have one in Sterling Heights, one in Canton, there's gonna be about twenty more in Michi- uh, sorry, America in the next year or so, we're at a hundred locations worldwide at the moment, this is going back places, so, let's see how it goes here.
How's it been going so far?
It's been good, we had a good summer, fall has been great, actually, I feel like it's more of a fall city, I'm new here.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, so you're coming up to, most of the business make thirty-five to forty percent of their income from the Monday after November through January, because of the lights.
Yes, yes.
So you'll be ready, and make sure that you're open in the evening, and the crowds should just come in, and we keep the lights on then all weekends in January also, so that should be good for your business.
Yep.
That was gonna be one of my questions, what are your hours of operation?
So we are nine to nine, seven days a week.
Wonderful.
Yes, we're planning on going later on with the lights, of course.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
No.
None.
Okay, so it is, thank you, sir, okay, so it is 7:04, I'm going to open the public hearing, and if anyone would like to come up and make a comment about the request, please step to the lectern. Rose, anyone online?
No one's online.
Okay, I will close the public hearing at 7:04, and one of our longer ones, so anyways, I want to thank you very much for coming up, you could have a seat now, so Commissioners, we have a motion here, or, I'm sorry, I'd be looking for a motion for payment in lieu of parking for one parking spot.
Just process-wise, do all payment in lieu of parking go to City Council?
No, so that's a fair question, so, if, when we set the ordinance up this way and drop the price to $1,000 per space, we made an agreement that any request ten or less would have to be paid immediately upon a C of O, in this case, he decided to come in after the C of O, which is fine, so he has to make that payment directly, just one payment of $1,000. If they want to go on a payment plan, they could go to City Council and seek that, and then we have an agreement, but it's gotta be eleven spaces or more, and then they could go over ten years, equal payments, but so this will not go to City Council.
Okay, thank you.
If I may follow up for just that question, so ten or more, or, I'm sorry, ten or less comes right to us, payment plan goes to City Council, but I wasn't sure if I heard you really, so let's say it's fifteen or twenty, does that go to City Council?
Has to.
Has to go.
Because it's a contract, if they want them.
Well, that's not true, only if they ask for a payment plan.
So, for terms, it has to go, but if someone wants forty-five, and they can drop a check for forty-five thousand, there's nothing to go to City Council about?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, any other, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I have a question for the City Manager, more of a rhetorical question, I guess, so, we lowered the payment in lieu, parking in lieu to a thousand dollars, but now it seems like we're getting more and more of these, and it's like, is there a limit on, you know, are we just gonna start giving out hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, I mean, we're, I mean, I think we didn't really discuss that when we did the payment in lieu, but now, what, you know, is there an answer to that?
Yeah, so there is, actually, that's a very good question, so, what happens to every single request, and this got flared up during the marijuana situation, so, all the little folks that were looking to do dispensaries, all needed payment, they all needed parking in lieu, so, to be consistent, every single time one of these requests comes in, we look at where it's at, and we pull the data from the parking lots that would be the ones that would support this, and remember, we only saw fifty percent of the lot, either an east side lot, west side lot separate, east side deck, west side deck, the maximum we would sell permits for is fifty percent, for instance, the Masonic Lot that we rent, we had to stop selling parking passes and limit the amount of people that could go there for that exact reason, at some point, it gets saturated, so, in this case, because it's adjacent to the upper farmer's market lot, we felt, that's during the day, we look at that, and it's thirty-eight percent open, so, if someone comes in, certain other lots, like the Brunch House Lot, there's something you might have to take a look at on Third Street, so, we look at each one, we didn't put a hard cap on them, but we look at how many passes were sold for each one of those lots, and then, or the east side deck or the west side deck, and then we make that decision, so, it's not always automatic, the little ones are gonna be pretty hard to deny, to be honest with you, because one space technically wouldn't overburden.
But we haven't really, the City Council hasn't said, well, it's forty percent, it's gonna be, we're just not making it up as we go, but we're just.
Right, because we haven't had an issue, yeah, we haven't had an issue, yeah, we haven't had an issue where any of them, we're in a parking lot that, we got feedback from the police department, now the parking enforcement group, saying that it's overburdened during parking, so, but each one is separate, and we look at each one individually, so, but we could bring that up to the parking committee meeting, that's coming up here in the next week, I think, so we could actually, at the PAC, talk about that, do we wanna figure out something like that, again, the idea was to generate, we know some of our business owners are a little bit aged, and we're getting different kind of backfill spaces in, so, we've had a couple of large, like the Roxy, that was a large one, and the one that's on your talk at this evening's, a large Ask, but again, we look at them individually, so, I don't know if there's a magic wand, during the day, it's never, ever an issue, it's the evening, so, based on the use, if it's a heavy restaurant, then you might have pause looking at how many spaces they're asking for, if it's for the restaurant, in this case, the coffee shop's a restaurant, but it's, you saw the hours, ninety-nine, so it's not an issue for us, if that helps, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions?
No.
Okay.
Are we ready for motion?
If you're ready to make one.
I'll make a motion to approve the parking in lieu for one space.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll support.
Oh.
Either one.
Laura Murphy supports, okay, is there a discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Peckins.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klauser.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, moving on to the next item, six A, this is consideration of 339 East Street, this is request for site plan approval for a three-story mixed-use development, retail on the first floor and offices on the top two floors at the former site of the Moon River Soap Company, this is a request for site plan approval and payment in lieu of parking, Mr. City Manager.
Yep, Vidya's going to give you a synopsis, nothing's really changed, other than I did meet with the developer, their team, we sat down, we tried to get as creative as we could, to try to, we didn't demand changing what the building looks like, we were trying to soften it a bit, so one of the things that we looked at, that had helped on the front part of the building, forget the brick for right now, was that green box, that you could get some vegetation against that sidewalk, so we looked at across the street, which would be to your right, in front of that office building, the brick office building there, there's a ribbon of about eighteen inches of grass, it's pretty small, so, you can see it to the, to your left, that's the building across the street, so, you can see now, on the west side of the street, that was just blank wall with limestone, so, what we were able to do is work with the Department of Public Works, and we try to, most times, we try to keep the sidewalk off the curb, if we can, but all the way down the street, it's on the curb, basically, so, we were able to swap the land to be able to put, to pick up about eighteen inches of green against also the east elevation of that building, which allowed them to put landscaping there, and still keep the sidewalk there, and there's a nice transition period between, when you get to the driveway, to the parking, the public parking, to the south, that's a good transition point, so really wide driveway, thirty-six feet, so we're not worried about cutting back in, and we were okay with that, so, that's the compromise that we worked out with the developer, just like, if you remember Corner Bar, for those that were on the commission then, we asked them to do an agreement with the city, because technically, their landscaping was in our right-of-way, and we had a perpetual landscape agreement that Mr. Kraut worked with their attorney on, we would do the same thing here, and they were amiable to that, so, other than that, I can, Vidya's gonna go over quickly, and we can have the petitioner talk a little bit about their thought process.
Thank you, Mr. Banda, Vidya, the table's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I think Nick summarized most of the project, just a clarification, as a mixed use, this building is restaurant on the first floor and offices on the above two, it replaces the Moon River Soap Company that was formerly on the site, the site is zoned CBD, which is central business district, the applicant appeared before the Planning Commission for a preliminary hearing on August 5th, and they came before the Planning Commission for a public hearing on September the 3rd, however, at your last meeting, the Planning Commission discussed the project and decided to wait till you had a fuller vote in order to make a decision on the project, and also to provide the applicant with guidelines for certain changes that Nick just summarized, just as a brief refresher, some of the main points that we raised in our review letter is with regard to pedestrian circulation, for that, I will go back to the site plan, if the Planning Commission recollects this project, it has got sidewalks along both street frontages, as Nick just explained, in order to provide the flowering window box along the east facade, there has been some shift in the right-of-way and the landscape area in order to allow for adequate pedestrian access, one of the things that we always bring up is barrier-free access for buildings, in this case, the applicant is seeking payment in lieu of parking for all of the required spaces on the site, which is a total of thirty spaces, so, we had a concern about barrier-free parking space availability, at this time, the site abuts a municipal parking lot to its south, and the only handicap accessible space is on the south end of the lot, so, we had suggested that the applicant try working with city administration on the feasibility of moving that handicap accessible spot to this area, we are not talking about creating another handicap accessible space, because I know the city cannot lose existing parking spaces within a public lot, however, if there is a possibility of that space being stripped here, a handicap space in this area will be more functional and of more use to all of the businesses that are located on East Fourth Street, so, this is a recommendation for them to work with the city only if it is feasible, one of the other things we had asked the applicant for clarification was regarding grease removal from the restaurant kitchens, and the applicant did clarify that the grease will be disposed of and not into the cities, dumpsters, the building elevation was a point of discussion at your last meeting, and the Planning Commission had recommended that the applicant come up with a color palette, when originally, the applicant appeared before the PC, this portion of the building was actually a brighter white color, the Planning Commission advised the applicant to tone down the colors, so that the colors, while they don't need to necessarily be red brick, they at least have to be more muted in tone and in keeping with the rest of the buildings in downtown, which the applicant has addressed by the change in the color palette, now, the east wall of the building abuts a single-story structure immediately, I'm sorry, the west wall of the building, abuts a single-story structure, there is a three-foot gap between these two buildings, so this building is not exactly built to the property line, and the reason for this is there are two electrical meters and some utility lines that are going in that three-foot space between the two buildings, so this building cannot be shifted all the way to the lot line itself, previously, on the west wall, the applicant had shown a few large windows, but in the future, if ever the building next door is constructed to a higher story, these windows would not be able to be used for fire safety reasons, so, based upon our discussion with the fire department, also, we recommended elimination of those windows, however, that wall is still visible when you're heading east on East Fourth Street, and we had asked the applicant to maybe incorporate some window-shaped brick in it, they did, but the window-shaped rectangular patterns were not very distinct, so maybe the applicant can clarify tonight what is being done, maybe use a heading bone pattern brick or a slightly contrasting color brick to make it stand out, the applicant did provide a cross-section diagram, also showing the height of the proposed building, since this is a flat-roofed building, replacing a previously pitched-roofed building, the applicant wants to show that overall, the size or the mass of the building in terms of height is not going to be any greater than what was previously on that site itself. Nick already summarized the landscaping, previously, there was a planter box shown along the north facade, now it is shown along the east facade too, our recommendation was that these be planted with some kind of seasonal plantings that would be year-round, some form of decoration, so they don't just become empty beds in winter, based on our review of the proposal, we would recommend that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval for Paulo Longo to be located at 339 East Street, subject to the six conditions that are noted in our August 26, 2024 letter. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vidya, Commissioners, any questions for these?
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one clarification? So, Vidya, I think you said the building next to it, to the west is one story, it's actually two stories.
Okay.
Two stories?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know you know it was two, I think you just said one out loud, but it was, just so you know, so you're gonna just see above that one story would be the west, and, oh, and they, I worked with, again, the parking folks, and we would be amenable to moving that handicapped parking space here, because it would serve all the buildings adjacent to that property, and they always wanted one there, so, we won't lose a space, we'll just move it from way south to that spot.
In the structure.
No, right, where Vidya pointed, right, on that last, right there, yep, so that would become handicapped, so all the folks on that bank of buildings could use that.
Okay.
And right now, it's way down, and it's hard to get up the hill even, if you're in a wheelchair, so.
Okay, I thought there was some preclusion about having handicapped on the street, remember, we had that issue with?
Yeah, on the street, but this is in the parking lot.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
It's the first spot in this.
Okay, all right, Commissioners, any other questions? No.
So the entrance, say you're going to the restaurant, is it, can you get there, like, at that, for, I can't read it, it's an entrance or not?
Out in the park, for handicapped, you mean?
So the, so the barrier-free entrance is right off East Fourth Street, this is where a wheelchair will have to enter, there is a second entrance over here, however, due to the slope and the grade, this entrance, I believe, is not barrier-free accessible, that was one of the reasons for our recommendation for the handicap space to be moved here, so a wheelchair has to travel only this distance, rather than all the way from the south end of the parking lot.
Thank you.
And the city can swap that out?
Yes, Nick mentioned that the city is amenable to it, so that could be a good design inclusion.
Okay, and they're requesting thirty spaces too, okay, and I think the mayor had a question, and I think it's certainly one that I was thinking of, is, and again, I don't wanna keep pounding on this, but it's kind of like a zero-sum game, right? There's only so many spaces available, and there's so many opportunities, because sooner or later, an applicant's gonna come and say, hey, I want this, sorry, we're all out, so is it kind of first in time, first and right, almost?
I think that's exactly the way to put it, so if you remember, right, when we were looking at 120 South Main, they needed fifty-seven parking space waiver, and they weren't even close to any parking spaces, they were like, we'll have our people go down the staircase they're gonna make to diversion.
That's the laundry mat or the dry cleaners area.
So here, part of our analysis was, we have a deck across the street, that's, yeah, so you have the whole municipal parking lot, which is pretty full in the evening with the restaurants, so, we were hesitant at first because of, that lot is very well-used, not so much, even during the day, it pretty much is, but the parking structure during the day isn't there, and then the really, the waiver was, because it's office on two floors, if they would've came in and just done residential, they literally would've needed zero parking spaces, but because of, they couldn't get a dedicated space on their own site for residential, they decided to go with office, so, during the day, again, office is, it's fine, the numbers are okay on both lots and the parking structure, in the evening, it gets much more full, obviously, but the restaurant there would only have needed two more spaces than Moon River when they were open at the same time, because they were, remember, they were retail on the first floor, and they had an apartment on the second floor, so, that's, we, again, we analyzed parking structure, occupancy rates, and the lot to the south, lot to the south alone, it would've been a problem, I think we probably could not have supported that, but because of the decks there, and the usage on the deck during the day.
That was gonna be one of my questions, and not to put you on the spot for math, but is there a way to break down what they would need strictly if it was just for the restaurant?
Yes, it's, Vidya, it's on her sheet right there, yep.
Can I just hear?
Yeah, it's twenty-four hundred divided by one, so twenty-four.
Yes, so the restaurant alone requires twenty-four parking spaces.
Okay, and the six would be for the office space above?
Correct.
Okay. And is the city comfortable and confident that twenty-four spaces exist in that parking structure from, let's say, four to midnight?
Yes.
If you, if you go on the top deck especially, that's never full.
Again, holidays, we talked about, we don't design things for holidays, but on a given day, we had the parking enforcement, Dave, David went through this and made sure that we easily have in excess of those spaces.
Is there any way that realistically, a building could be built on that lot with its standalone parking, like, with its own?
There would be, so, if you, it would have to be first floor parking underneath it, so you'd just be able to have two usable floors, you couldn't put a restaurant on the second or third floor, obviously, it wouldn't work.
Okay.
So, in order to have a restaurant, it would have to basically be on the grade, so, but you could do that, you could have had condos above it, they could've put eight condos, and this was, somebody paid for parking in lieu of nine spaces years ago, so they had, they were grandfathered in by paying in lieu of long, long time ago, before Moon River even, yep.
Prior to it being cheap.
Exactly.
And, I'm sorry, I don't mean to hammer if all these questions, but, is it, is my recollection correct that this area was at one time excluded from the pay-in lieu?
No, it was excluded from the parking exemption.
The parking exemption.
So parking exempt was both sides of Main Street.
Right.
Alley to alley, but, no, this was always then, you had to provide your own parking, that's why originally, before Moon River even, they had to pay for parking to even use it as a commercial site.
All right, I feel like I've monopolized all the questions, Mr. Lord? Ms. Klauser, go ahead.
So kind of just building on what you were saying, Commissioner Hauser, so I know we're about to, we've had multiple requests, right, for the parking in lieu of, and so I would ask similar questions, is there a way that we can get, which I think is what the mayor was saying too in the last comment, of some kind of understanding, a better understanding of the inventory, parking inventory in the city, and then I would think, to me, it feels like it's signaling something, whether our parking requirements aren't appropriate, or maybe we're potentially approving, you know, too many modifications, capacity, density issues, it just feels like it's signaling something, and so I would ask that, either through the master plan process that we're about to finalize, we reevaluate those requirements, or, and assess that inventory, or maybe a process outside of that, but that would be my ask, to understand this.
It's a great question, so, what we'll do is, independent of that even, you all should be aware of that, so, little back history, so back in the day, for many decades, it was, if you wanted to buy a pay-in lieu of space, it was $12,000, nobody was gonna pay, so, the rest, buildings on, for instance, Greens, if Greens would do what they were doing, a restaurant on that first floor, they would have had to pay $486,000, so, it stopped redevelopment of the businesses, to the point where we were getting stuck with, if you didn't get another retailer, no one was going to put in restaurants or things that required more, so we had, usually, beauty salons based on, or barbers based on how many stations you have, they usually needed more parking, any retail is one to two hundred, doesn't matter what you're selling, it was the restaurants, then restaurants with alcohol that kicked it, so, then we had a discussion when I first got here fifteen years ago, about, we need to be able to diversify our base downtown, and the first set of our community surveys were like, we need more restaurants, well, the restaurateurs were like, we can't come here, because you, even a one-floor restaurant was $256,000 in parking, they couldn't eat that, so then, City Council said, well, we'll give it a try at 7,500, so we did that for four years, reduced it 7,500, nobody bought a space, and then about three or four years ago, again, the DDA recommended, hey, we're having a hard time starting to backfill these spaces, we said restaurateurs come in, mostly it's the restaurateurs, coffee shops, things that weren't necessarily in vogue ten years ago, these little spaces, one or two spaces needed, to do it, they were willing to pay one or $2,000, like Boss Barber, he had to pay $57,500 to run a barber shop and have a part-time speakeasy in there, right, so, so City Council and Planning Commission, we talked about it, made that decision at that time, that we wanted to induce business, so they dropped it to a thousand dollars, certainly can be talked about, again, I think, we will get you quickly, data, we can show you anytime, any day, all through the year, three hundred sixty-five days, what the occupancy is in those places, the mayor and I dealt with one for a year, one of our free lots, we had people, one of the businesses was using it overnight, and we tried to not have people park overnight, it's a fine line, when people are drinking, and they're being prudent, and saying, I'm gonna get an Uber, I'm leaving my car in the lot, they can call the police department, say, I'm leaving my car overnight, but it got a little bit out of hand in the Firestone lot, we call it, so we had to work with the Firestone guys, say, you can't leave more than fifteen cars there, get your own lot if you want to, so, we've been back and forth trying to monitor that, but in the pay lots, again, we look at the data, but we can share that data with you all, for sure, and we will, so that you know how many spaces, you can see time of day, time of year, when they load up, obviously, at Big Bright's, with the restaurants, it really loads up, but I think we can get you all that information, that will help you as we go down the line, the good news, like, the next, we have another pay-in lieu, but again, three parking spaces, right behind, it's a lot that we just rebuilt in the last week or so, right, so, again, when 120 South Main came in, the first time Peter Storil brought that in from the design house, it parked itself, he put three stories of parking underground, the last two people that came in didn't wanna do that, and were asking for fifty-six parking spaces, with none within two blocks, without crossing a major road, so, we don't always just say yes, or we don't recommend yes to you all, but, so, if that helps, but we will get you that data.
Yeah, appreciate the context.
Any other questions? No, Mr. Lord?
I was just gonna kind of tag on to the same thing, just, I wasn't here when the decks were built, and I assume there were studies that were done at that time, that looked at all of the different uses in town, and the parking that's generated, the needs that are generated from those uses, and it seems like, you know, as we're going through, we've master planned, we've zoned, you know, for certain allowable uses, and we wanna be able to accommodate that, but parking could be a restrictor there, and the best we can do is look at the studies that were done back then, because they had certain assumptions, and I don't know how those are catching up to those studies that were done back then, but you also have a lot of data in front of you, you've got the meters, you've got the, I'm assuming the decks coming in and out, so you've got all that to look at, and I'm glad to hear that you are, because that was my question, is how are we coming up with? Because that was, my question is, how are we coming up with, I think this is okay versus we've hit the limit?
And, and I'll tell you, when it was, uh, if, up until we made the parking management district, Main Street, every single building, every single one could went to a full-on two-story bar, and we would've had no, they would've had it by nothing. They didn't even have the opportunity because that was a parking exempt, zero parking required because we didn't want people buying historic buildings, tearing them down to build a parking lot. So it was like, it, that's what started this whole thing. It got to a free-for-all where we started getting two or three big restaurants in, and now the people that were the retailers like, hey, there's no parking, that's why we built the parking structures. And then again, it's time, you always need to look at a snapshot in time to say, are we having a problem again? To this point, data shows no problem. But you can't go on forever, you're a hundred percent right. If you just kept loading them up, and the good news is, you can't load it up on Main Street anymore, you'd have to do pay-in lieu of, to do, even Fieldstone, this was a Fieldstone winery. Some people would've said that had more people in it than what we're gonna hear tonight, a coffee shop, different hours, right? But that was a retailer because technically Pat didn't have a liquor license, he made the wine, but it wasn't a bar. So if it was a bar, they could've moved in there. But you used to have Main Street billiards, for instance, that's like seventy parking spaces they need, and they never had to provide any. So it's a, it's a line you have to watch a hundred percent agree. That's why the parking management, uh, system is there, and we have meetings and talk about things like that, about how many passes, again, people will sell more passes, well, you have to have the opportunity for the people to be there. The latest thing is, the restaurant, the retailers, employees are starting to get the passes, because it's twenty dollars a month, it's eighty-four cents a day, if you wanted to work a forty-hour week. That's nowhere in the country can you be, I was just in Austin, it's tw, it's twenty dollars a day, not twenty dollars a month, except for the employees to park. So the, we, we try to watch that, but now the, the permit users are starting to take the good spaces up again. And so we go to the retailers and say, tell your employees to take the farthest spaces back in the public lots. You can use your pass, but don't take the good ones up. No permits are allowed on the street parking, because that's supposed to be for the, the convenience of folks that want to put their money in the meter for three hours, right? So that's a lot of stuff, but we, um, great questions, and, and we'll make sure we keep analyzing, but we will get you data.
Any questions, commissioners on this side? Should we ask the applicant to come up? Okay, so is the applicant here? If you don't mind, come on up, please, the lectern.
Good evening, uh, my name is Peter, uh, from Donna Associates, and, uh,
Paul Longo, the applicant.
Gentlemen, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing fine, anything that you'd like to supplement to the commissioners?
Um, essentially, you've covered the, the majority. I just wanted to, um, to, to recap a, a bit. The, the, the height, uh, I understand in prior meetings was a concern, and the overall style. I, I think over the, the past few meetings, we, we did make, uh, some improvements. Color, um, and, uh, it was, uh, I, I hope it was clear in the, in one of the slides with the, uh, showing the, the height of the prior building compared to, you know, what, what's, what's there, what's, um, uh, being proposed. Um, in fact, I think the ridge was even, uh, of, of the, the Moon River building was even taller than, than the, uh, what we're proposing. The other thing is that the grade, uh, the, um, I believe it was mentioned, I forgot who mentioned it, but that, uh, there was only one accessible entrance. Actually, both of them will be accessible, um, just, just so that it's, uh, it's clear, yeah. Uh, because the, the one, uh, on the east side, the entrance on the east side off of, uh, East Street there is going to basically, basically be lower, and then there's an elevator that brings you up to the, the other floors. The, um, the, the windows, uh, that were removed from the west side, we replaced them with, uh, brickwork. Essentially, what, what we're proposing to do is use soldier courses and, uh, roll locks to, to simulate a window. And then, um, in, inside, we'll probably, uh, do like a, a herringbone, uh, pattern or, or something like that. Just to, to give it some, uh, interesting, uh, like an interesting texture. We cover, um, Nick, uh, covered the, the, the green area that we're proposing to put on the, the east side, uh, by moving the, the walkover, um, about eighteen inches, and that way that it'll soften that corner so that, um, it, it's, uh, because the, the property does slope, uh, towards the east. And that'll give us an opportunity to put, um, annual, uh, plants, uh, or flowers, et cetera. And then, um, um, I think, um, I, I think that, that, that covers it. I, um, it was, uh, Nick, and, uh, probably, it covered everything pretty, pretty well.
Thank you, that was very helpful. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I just have one about the accessible entrance. So going from the proposed, um, handicap spot, um, people would be able to get to the restaurant through that entrance as well? Not just the office?
The, the, so that entrance, um, yes, the, we'll, we're, we're, we're trying to, um, design it so that the, the elevator, uh, has a third stop, basically.
Okay. It looks, it just looks like from the outside that it's the same level, but it's not.
In, in the, the model, uh, the, the black and white model, it doesn't, uh, show it accurately just because, uh, it's, it's a Revit model, we didn't, uh, adjust the grade. But, um, yeah, it, 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 well, it, it's gonna slope towards the, the east and, and we have to, uh, address it because you, you will need, uh, two points of egress from the ground floor anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Could you remind me what, what material is flanking the windows, um, around that corner from east to fourth? Can't tell if it's, if it's brick like the rest of the building or something else?
So, so, um, on the, are, are you referring to the second and third floor?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, um, so, so that is an ACM, uh, panel. Uh, it's essentially, um, an, an aluminum, uh, panel that, like, um, I, I think there's, uh, the, um, Fox, uh, the dealership right, right, uh, south of the, yeah, on Rochester right there. Uses, uses the same stuff.
And that's the only place that's used, it looks like?
Um, you, you know, we, we went around and took some pictures of, uh, other buildings that were, that had a kind of a modern motif, I,
I'm sorry, I mean, on your building, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The rest of it's bricks and limestone.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Bach, any further questions?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kinsick, any questions? No, on this side? Mr. Lord?
I do, um, so on the south elevation, that one is the one that concerned me a little bit bef, before. Because it's a big brick wall and it's right up against that parking lot, and as you're driving northbound, you're gonna see that. So I know, I see, um, in the black and white elevation, you have some windows that are there. But I wonder if you could consider, um, breaking up that brick facade a little bit, just with some, you know, different brick courses or, or something, just to, nothing crazy, nothing, I'm not looking for anything expensive, just something to break that up a little bit, um.
Sure.
Yeah, if you can go to that south elevation.
I, I think,
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the south elevation.
Page thirty-two, page thirty-two of the PDF.
Page thirty-two, okay. Okay, here we are.
So, you know, some other way to break up that brick facade there in the middle, I think, would be, would be, would be good.
What, um, what I think we can do is, is, um, duplicate what we're doing on the west side, uh, perhaps, between the, the windows. And, uh, and, and, and probably, and do, do perhaps, uh, some soldier course.
Right.
Uh, between the, okay.
I think one of the good design you could incorporate is to put a row of soldier course brick, maybe in a slightly contrasting color, down to separate the windows. That'll sort of break up the mass of the different floors. So if you could just run a soldier course of brick and maybe do a diamond pattern or something in herringbone, just like you're going to do on the west facade, it should actually help relieve this facade. And make it look better.
Yeah.
And tho, those are real windows, right? I mean, those are functioning, because the,
Yes.
The call-out in the elevation there, it's, it's noted as number four, which says storefront system. I wasn't sure what it was meant by storefront system.
Basically, the, the aluminum storefront, uh, they're aluminum windows essentially.
Okay, okay. The other question I had is, so you're, you have a door in the back there, was, which puts you at that finish floor elevation, which is a bit higher than the street, right? So we're coming up in elevation, but your building's right up on the sidewalk that abuts the parking lot.
Right.
So there's gonna be a wall there?
No, the, the, you, you mean the transition between inside and out.
Yeah, so basically, if I'm, if I'm in the parking lot and I'm looking, I'm gonna see your front door there, which is gonna be higher than the sidewalk to the right that goes around the building, and then you cut, you kind of come up to that. So what's, how, how is that grade made up?
Yeah.
From the parking lot view?
Yeah, it, so on, on the east side, there's a vestibule that's sunken, and it's level with the, the east side of the, the, right, right, that, that is the level of the floor.
That's the level of the floor.
You, you turn the, the, i- if you turn the, the corner, on the east side of the building, there's a, a sunken vestibule.
That looks, is that different than what I'm looking at?
Yeah.
Well, that's the, that's the,
This is the south facade, this is the east facade. And so this is the rear door, and this is sloped towards the sidewalk along East Street.
Uh-huh. Okay. So, okay. So the, the sidewalk that exists today in the parking lot, that is the meters right, right up on it, are gonna stay as is?
Yeah.
Right, you're not having to do anything there?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, okay, that's all, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, any questions? Jessica?
No.
Um, I've got two. Do you anticipate, um, paying in lieu immediately, or would you need terms?
No, we can pay in lieu, uh, directly.
Okay, all right. So then it wouldn't go to city council? Okay, that's the reason I was asking. And, and the second question I've got, this is not trying to be ticky-tack here, but on one of the pictures, the, the drawings, one of the elevations, there's a very large utility pole right on the corner there. Is that gonna have to stay, or will they be able to relocate that? You know what I'm talking about?
It'd be nice to have it come down.
I'm working with DT on that.
By design, yes.
I can tell you, so lately, DT's been trying to, it helps them when they're underground. So we just dealt with two other places that they said never, and all of a sudden they're underground. So there, there's an opportunity here, absolutely.
Okay.
Because that, that pole was part of the problem with burnt down. It was, it connected from the building, but from the alley to the, that pole to the building chief. I remember when we were out there that night, everything was on fire out there from the line. So the more they can get below ground, I think, is a good thing. So, uh, again, that's a major, that's a major pole though, so.
Right.
It's, it would be on the city or DT, they work with the petitioner to make that happen, so, but it's certainly doable.
And when you say the city, the city wouldn't be liable for that relocation if it was to happen, right? Okay, all right. Commissioners, any other questions on the applicant? Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So Mr. Banda, I guess from a procedural point here, so obviously we'll be looking for a motion?
Right, so tonight would be the night to make a decision one way or the other because technically the, the zoning audit says after sixty days, if nothing is done by the planning commission, it's an automatic approval. So whichever way you all feel, that's fine, but I would make your decision this evening. Plus you had things that you needed, more information that you would need to make a decision, that's fine, but.
For this part, we're allowed to take comments from the public on this one? Yep, sure, so if there's anyone in the public who would like to make a comment, please come up to the lectern. Mr. Beaton, with your hand up? You're welcome.
Good evening, glad to be back.
Your name and address, please.
Scott Beaton, six five five Ballinger Street, Rochester Hills, Michigan. So when the Christman Building was blown up by a gas main years back, I think some of us remember that.
Yeah.
The building collapsed, and it was a historic building. And the Christman family was adamant, they didn't think twice that they were gonna put an historic building back on that corner. And they did, Penny put an historic building back on that corner, and they actually embellished it. They made it even look better, and today it's a beautiful building. We just brought up the pole. Flash forward, pole explodes, burns down the soap company. Burns it to the ground, it's a tragedy in Rochester, an absolute tragedy. That building was built in nineteen eighteen. Nineteen eighteen. That's the same year we lost World War One, well, I mean, that's the same year World War One ended.
See, we won that, I tell you.
A couple of years we lost, yeah, that's fine.
We won, and, and it's the same year of the, it's the same year as the Spanish Flu. It's a hundred years old, that building was a hundred years old.
Really lifting us up.
I know. So I would think it would be almost a given. If a tragedy brings down a historic building in Rochester, then you would think that the applicant, the planning board, and the planning department would replace that tragedy with an historic-looking building. What is proposed, which is in a, a building, is a modern building. Sure, we can put flowers in front of it, that when you open up the windows, you're gonna get knocked off, but you can put flowers in front of it, you can put all the brick pattern on it you want, okay? But you're still basically rearranging the chairs on the Titanic. It's still a modern building. Modern with a lowercase m, which means it's being built today. It's not twentieth-century modern, not even close. Modern buildings today are propping up all over America, Canada included. And they are diminishing the character of small towns. And I wish your chair was here tonight, Mr. McGee. Mr. McGee made it real clear.
Mr. Gassen now.
Okay, okay. I'll get it right.
That's okay.
Made it real clear that he was not gonna let modern Royal Oak architecture destroy the character of the city of Rochester. And I hate to be so, I'm gonna be nice, I'm, I'm gonna blunt, this modern building, well, once it's built, diminishes the character of the city of Rochester. Thirty-five feet of metal is the same stuff they stick on Bill Fox Chevrolet. To me, painted rust brown does not comply with page, page seventy-eight of your master plan. It, there's nothing on Main Street that's covered in Bill Fox Chevrolet metal painted rust brown. Nothing. The building does not have any character whatsoever that reflects the character of Main Street Rochester, Michigan. When the, uh, I think it's the ref, the refiner, no.
Elevator? The elevator?
The elevator came to town, they went to great, when the elevator came to town and dis, displayed their facade, they went through great lengths, great lengths to just show how their building was gonna comply with historic Rochester, Michigan. Like I said, it's gonna really stand out, folks. And no matter how much brick, veneer brick paving you, you put on the sides, it's not gonna look historic. And I think if the tragic loss of a building that was built in nineteen eighteen, the year we won World War One, I think we need to replace it with an historic building. And I asked the applicant to please take one last look at beautiful Main Street Rochester, Michigan. Take one last look at what they're presenting, which should be in Royal Oak, it could be in Dallas, Texas, it could be in Houston, it could be land, it could be anywhere. Take one last look at that building and ask ourselves, is that really what? Take one last look at that building and ask ourselves, is that really what we want? Do we really want to diminish the character of our city with that kind of Royal Oak, modern architecture? Nick Bana and your planning staff, Christian and your, 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 your planning board, Stuart and your city council, you're still in my book the very, very best, the very best. I've been to a lot of planning commission meetings, they build this stuff all day long. And I just don't think it's needed here in Rochester. And I sincerely thank all of you this evening for your time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beaton. Any other comments from the public? Rose, anyone online by chance?
No one's online.
Okay. Alright, so, Mr. Banda, anything further from the city?
I'll say no.
Okay. Mr. Peckins?
I just wanna say it's, it's not on Main Street, so that's one thing, it is in somewhat of a transition zone. Um, there are other buildings that are in transition zones that look very similar to this, so that's just my two cents.
Sure.
I have a question.
Duly noted, yes, Mr. Kenzick.
Um, I, I'll start by asking either Nick or Jeremy. Has any other developers come to, to redevelop this plot of land?
No.
Okay, so, if the gentleman that presented decided not to build here, we could sit with an empty lot for years?
In, in, yeah.
And there's no guarantee that whoever comes and develops that will build a historic building.
And just for my part, I would never make a decision on planning based on it's gonna sit vacant, I'd rather have it be vacant than make a mistake. Mm-hmm. I said I wasn't gonna say anything, but to Jeremy's point, down the street is a three-story brick building that Mitzelfeld built decades ago. That would be the book into this across the street, you can see that as a one-story brick building. Looks nothing like Main Street, looks nothing like Rochester, it's off the Main Street. And again, there are transition zones, we, the new zoning ordinance called for the transition zones. So, again, I, Mr. Beaton, I love him, and he's, his, he's extremely knowledgeable and passionate about the city, and I would agree ninety-nine percent of the time with him. On this one, again, with the parking structure across the street, that's two-story brick with limestone, th- we're not breaking character too hard here. If it was the first thing on this corner, and nothing else was across the street brick, across the street brick, up the street brick, I would think totally different, but we don't try to make decisions based on tax base, or a vacancy private, they could put a, a pocket park there if we had to. Uh, but, again, it, it's a, it's a tough call, and we, we would not want this on Main Street. Absolutely a hundred percent agree. Even the elevator, that was, it's not on Main Street, but it was such a big site, and it was residential, so they needed to do something special to stand out. They oughta build this on Main, uh, on the elevator and call it an office building. That's what Reewald did on his headquarters, he was far enough away, so, enough said.
Any further questions? Any other questions for the city? Mr. Banda, you mentioned something a moment ago, actually before the, Mr. Beaton got up, about sixty days and an ordinance, can you explain that a little bit?
And so in the zoning ordinance, it says, if the planning commission chooses not to act without a reason, after sixty days, it goes to an automatic approval. Never been used in the history of the city, and, because normally we're negotiating back and forth, and this developer never brought that up, but if you were just to say, I don't wanna make a decision, I, I would warn you, Mr. Krad could back me up on this, I believe that. We can't, you just, we need to make a decision at some point. They've been in here quite a bit, a lot of meetings, whether you like it or not, vote yes or no, that's okay, but I think they're due an answer.
A- a- and I would agree with you, I don't, I think that's just kicking the can, I just, I heard you say something, I wanted to make sure I understood the process, so
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yesterday.
Uh, I just, sorry, I just wanted to add another point to what Nick said. I just wanted to make a statement that both the restaurant and the office use are principal permitted uses in the district. As such, a principal permitted use means it's a use by right. So, should the planning commission choose to turn down a use, there have to be very sound reasons and feedback provided as to which, which portion of the ordinance the proposal violates or does not meet the letter off in order for it to be denied. In case of special exception uses, also known as special land uses, the planning commission has additional reasons that can be given for a project. But in this case, both the restaurant with full indoor seating and the office uses are principal permitted uses in the central business district. So, I'm, uh, I would defer to Attorney Krad also to, in case I misspoke, but I believe that needs to be kept in mind while any decision is being made.
That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Mr. Banda?
And, and I would add, Vidya's a hundred percent right. In this case, and I let the developer know this, that I had to say this, that because they don't meet parking, that would be your reason, that'd be your only reason. It would be, we don't like this because we don't like the fact that we're gonna overburn the parking system, it doesn't meet park, it's overbuilding the site, because you can't get parking. So, that would be the reason, not any of these other things.
Ostensibly, that's the only thing we're really determining, is whether or not parking in lieu is, is on the table, okay? Alright, so commissioners, obviously, we've heard from lots of, uh, different stakeholders here, the city, the applicant, the city planner. We've had an opportunity to discuss it, um, with the city, so, um, I'll, I'll open up for discussion right now. So, whomever wants to go first, if I don't see a hand, I'll just randomly pick someone. So, um, Mr. Bachman, why don't you go first? Thanks.
Seeing
Well, can we, can we discuss the architecture, um, given what Mr. Banda just said?
You, you can discuss it, but you can't make a decision based on architecture.
That shouldn't be your evaluative process.
But you can talk about it, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, I am curious to know how the other commissioners feel about, um, the building itself, it, it just seems incongruous to the area. And I, I, I think Mr. Beaton makes some great points. And given the, given the discussion about parking we had earlier, uh, much more than I expected us to discuss, um, it seems like a reasonable, um, concern, given the number of spaces.
Fair enough, okay. Jessica?
We always do that.
Same, I like to go out and then work my women, I don't sense where we're doing.
Um, I say we're ladies first. Um, and so, uh, while I understand the need for, uh, uh, you know, growth and investment in our community, I'm gonna echo a lot of the comments I made at the last planning commission meeting. I don't think this particular project fits the kind of established character of that area. I get it's not a Main Street, but if you look at the surrounding buildings, they're bungalow style. Um, in my opinion, it feels like next to those buildings, it's gonna stand in stark contrast to what's next to it, and doesn't really create continuity or cohesion with the rest of that strip, um, there. And then I would also say, I, I don't think it does anything to restore the historic charm or the unique architectural style that we're losing with Moon River. I, I think I mentioned it last time, the green building, the cool windows, i- it doesn't do any of that, so those are those comments on the building itself, and then I, again, like I said last time, think that thirty, um, parking in lieu of seems meaningful to me. That seems, um, I, I don't know if I wanna say significant, because I don't really have a benchmark here, or, or how to really establish that, but I do think it's meaningful. And I think thirty's a lot, and it feels to me it's signaling, again, that the areas, uh, or what they're putting in there is, um, high density and, and likely too dense for that area, and so, um, you know, if we, I, I don't think this part, particular project's right for this spot.
Thank you. Mr. Lord?
Um, well, I, I think, um, that, I, I've seen a lot of zoning ordinances that, that have very detailed, defined architectural standards and guidelines that become the roadmap for architecture that developers have to follow. And they can become restrictive, but at least it is sort of the collective voice of the community for what they want in their area. And we don't have that, so, we, it doesn't mean that It's just a master point. Ri- right, but, but in terms of what we are obligated to follow, because we, in this
Mr. Beaton?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm page twenty-seven.
Okay.
Right, okay, but, uh, we, uh, you know, are making decisions based on use. We can't turn a project down in this instance based on whether our, what our opinion is on what we like or don't like of the architecture. If we had certain tools in our toolbox that were more defined, that in this particular instance, that we were able to apply, that'd be a different story. So, you know, I, um, I, I, I'm not of the opinion my, myself, that everything historic is good. Just because it's old doesn't always mean it's good, and, you know, so I, and I'm okay with, you know, in certain areas of the city, looking outside the box a little bit. Myself, it's just my opinion, and I'm allowed my opinion in this particular instance, right?
Absolutely.
Um, so, for me, I look at it like the parking was a big deal for me. If we're starting to overload the city because of all these restaurants we're putting in, and we're not, we're not ready for it, because we don't have the parking ready, that's another story. But I think we've talked through that, and I'm, I'm comfortable that the city's looking very closely at that, more than just gut feel, you know? They got data to support their recommendation on that. So, while I do have some comments, and I'm glad to hear that the applicant is willing to look at some things to soften that south elevation, I'd like to put that in my, in a motion if we could. You know, I'm, I'm not against moving this project forward.
Ms. Murphy?
I would say, um, my, this is my, my second commission meeting, um, but I did, um, have to do some digging on the parking in lieu. I, um, was envisioning, you know, four cars to a spot. I, again, I didn't know how, how, where we stood with that, or what the prevailing, um, opinion or idea, or what the end goal is, or, or the stoppage point. Um, and then, um, I don't know, too, uh, if you had a restaurant that had its own parking lot, is one accessible spot out of thirty, is that?
You'd need to, it's one for twenty-five, two for fifty, three for seventy-five, and then four for eighty-one.
Okay. Um, so, I, you know, that, um, concerns me a little bit, that, um, it, it's, I think, difficult enough in the city to find accessible spots that are convenient, especially for eating at places that don't have their own lot. Um, uh, I have an elderly mother, and we kind of pick our places by where it's fifteen steps or less to the door. Um, and, uh, yeah, that would be my, my big concern, I think, is that it's, it's limiting, um, for some people. Um, not just my mother, but I, I think other people that would like to partake in our downtown. That that would be a concern of mine, would be the lack of accessible, accessibility, um
Sure.
From a car.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kenzick?
Yeah, um, I have mixed feelings about this building, yes, I acknowledge that it's modern-looking, but I'll be honest with you, I wasn't crazy about the Moon River buildings, so, you know, everyone is entitled to their opinion, and that's mine. You know, I do, I am taking a look at the, uh, pictures that the applicant presented, and, you know, this building that's being proposed is very similar to the building that's already on Main Street. And they look very, very similar, so, if people are going to try to, to, you know, disqualify that based on, on the appearance, which I know we cannot, I, I, I have a hard time doing so, just because there's such similar-looking buildings. The other thing I, I take a look at is the parking structure. In my opinion, I think this building actually provides a, is closer in look and feel to the parking structure that the city built than the, uh, the smaller stores that, you know, go all the way up, um, Fourth Street. So, from that perspective, you know, we've not really focused on, on, on how this blends with the other buildings in the area. All that people are focusing on are the, uh, uh, you know, the home-looking, uh, buildings that, that are between it and Main Street.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, um, I thought you might be calling on me. Um, so first of all, you know, the, the, the developer can obviously put up any building they choose to, o- obviously. Um, I think in that last meeting, a number of us said, you know, this doesn't feel right, this doesn't fit in the building. Please work with us, please go back and do something. Now, again, we asked, they didn't have to, um, but in looking at what they came back with, there's no change at all, or virtually no change. And that's kind of disappointing, because I thought, one thing about this planning commission, we seem to try to work things out. But they chose not to, which, which is their right. But to me, it is clearly not, doesn't fit down there, again, my opinion. I'm allowed that, right?
Absolutely.
Um, so, a- and the parking in lieu, I mean, to me, it's not like one spot or two, you know, it's a lot of spots. Um, and I think that's problematic with me.
Okay, thank you. So I guess that leaves me, and, you know, this is, um, thinking about this, I, I almost say it's harder than maybe the solar onyx job, because it's such a close call, because that one, I understood, you know, a lot about it, but in this one, I see a business who wants to come in, and, and I'm, sounds like I might be a little bit of an outlier here, but I've probably softened a little bit on the design. I've probably softened a little bit on the aesthetic end, and I, I think it's a very tasteful building. I still don't know if it's the right spot, but nevertheless, from a personal view, I don't necessarily have an objection to the, to the design, particularly based on the parking structure across the street and some other buildings around town. What does concern me, however, is the parking, and I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit, and this is something I've been thinking about bringing up to the planning commission, in general, it just happens to, to, to work here, is the planning commission gets a lot of projects, and we've approved a lot of projects over the past several years. And I'm often asked, what's going on with this one, what's going on with that one, and, and how come nothing's happening over here? And the problem with approving a project and then nothing happening is we lack the ability to properly forecast. And we lack the ability to say, okay, well, they're gonna put X number of apartments over here, they're gonna put X number of condos over here. And in theory, that's what they're doing, but in reality, it's not. And I was kind of telegraphing my comment to you, Mr. Banda, about, okay, we have this capacity, we only have so many spots that we can do. I don't know what's coming in the, well, I know what's happened in the past, I don't, certainly don't have a crystal ball, I can't tell what's happening in the future. But my concern is some of these projects that we've approved, that haven't gotten the shovels in the ground, or haven't gotten going, and I don't know how that's gonna impact this. And my own personal view is, is I would like a little bit more information on the quantity and availability of the spaces as it pertains to the structure, and how these other job, or other projects that we've approved could impact either, you know, adversely, or, or have no effect whatsoever. That's my ask, and so, I think if I could get some, some peace of mind on those numbers, I would certainly probably be mu- much more comfortable with, uh, giving this a, a, a yes. That's just my, but, but that's, it's based on the parking issue only, nothing about style or size, or, you know, anything like that, just stacks. So that's my view. Mr. Kenzick?
Uh, maybe to ask a clarifying question, I don't know what the inventory is in the city. I don't know if we have five hundred parking spots or five thousand, so I would like to kind of know that. But beyond that, I would like to know, like, how many, how many parking spots on the, um, east side of the street, like, are they dedicated? I'm, I'm assuming they're dedicated primarily to the businesses on the east side, but obviously, if, you know, you, you park on the east side, you could cross the street and visit a building or a restaurant or something on the west side. But is there any kind of, um, um, logic that's applied in terms of, you know, this parking lot serves, um, these, you know, this, these couple of streets, or the deck serves, you know, half of the downtown area on the east side of the street? Is there any kind of, like, a, a mechanism that goes in the decision-making process?
Right.
Because what I, I'm concerned about in respect to the parking is, you know, if you take a look at the highest level and say, you know, I'm just throwing out a number as an example, but let's say there's two thousand spots in the city, and at any given time, you know, only a thousand are being used, we probably can't say no to that.
Agreed.
Because it's being underutilized. However, if there is, you know, two hundred parking spots that are in the immediate vic- vicinity of this building, and eighty percent of those are being used at any given time, you know, is that over, overused?
And I think you said it much more eloquently than I did, that's exactly what I'm trying to find, is, is capacity versus need versus availability, so
So, so, if I may, so, a- age-old planning, um, conundrum. So, we have one thousand eight hundred forty-four total spaces in this town. Three years ago, when we did this base Three years ago, when we did the space line, if everybody in the city had provided parking on their own, we would be short, you ready for this? Two thousand one hundred sixty-four spaces. So we only have eighteen hundred total. Every spot, if it had its designated spot for a coffee shop or this, would be, we would be that much short. We would be double and a half. Then, so then what happens is comes in, it's time of day, it's time of year, it's hour by hour. So I can get you all the data you want, but it doesn't, it's not relevant because if there's a special event that happens, people will say, oh, I can't find a place to park around here. So, so all you can do in the planning world and parking world is set a standard and then evaluate that based on the real data that you get from the parks system. We, we do that on every single one. And again, time of day, proximity, we could tell you, we can do a heat map and show exactly what you asked for. Within five hundred feet, within fifteen feet of a door, how many spaces, what are they used for? We designed our system to be at thirty-eight percent overall on a twelve-hour day. That's how we created it so that we'd have, and, and it's, it's probably right around there, maybe thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent. We weren't that far off when we did this twelve years ago, so. But again, during lights, it's a hundred percent. So, so it's, it's, it's a moving target, it's hard to make a decision on it. But you also, we have people already saying, build another deck. Why would you build a seven million dollar deck when you only have sixty-two percent of your parking for eight hours out of twelve not used? So it's a tough decision to make. So I, not dodging you, I'm just saying it's such a moving target.
No, but I, I, I think that's the information I think that would be helpful is because you, you know that off the top of your head. Some of us probably don't, you know, and, and, you know, look at a shopping mall. It's eleven months out of the year that things, a ghost town except for, you know, Thanksgiving through New Year's and then it's packed. So I, I understand that there's gonna be anomalies based on days or events in town, et cetera. But I think from my view, it would be very helpful, even if it's just another regurgitation of what you said. So I can have peace of mind and say, okay, we do have the capacity or we don't. That's, that's really just gonna tip the scale one way or the other for me. And I'm sorry to make you do all this and.
It's, it's easy, it's a computer problem.
Yeah, and I, and I certainly don't want to be a detriment to the applicant because I think it, you know, my personal view is, hey, I, I, I think it's a, it's a, it's a tasteful building. We can have differences of opinion whether it's the right spot for it. But at the end of the day, we have to make our decision based on the payment in lieu of parking issue. And for me at least, I want to make certain that I'm familiar and comfortable with all the quantity and, and the availability of parking.
So I would just ask, so it's a double edged sword here. If we come back and show you that sixty-two percent of the day, there's no issue, then you took away your opportunity to vote no because it won't be an issue. Not you, just everybody, so.
I understand.
If you voted no and it didn't pass, then Mr. Krotz is gonna counsel us different. But again, we can get that data, but.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with what you just said, I mean.
But if it shows that there's enough parking, then you can't use that as an excuse. It's not subjective. If you, if you say in a twelve-hour period, there's only thirty-eight percent of the parking is used in the area, how can you say that's not enough parking? I don't know if that's subjective.
I guess we would have to know is, are there, you know, thirty spaces?
Right.
You know, capa, is there excess of thirty spaces throughout the day?
Absolutely.
And that's the litmus test.
Well, we just approved one. We just approved a couple payment in lose.
Yeah.
So we were okay with that, so like, where's the, if it was, you know?
Well, because I think what it becomes is, Eric, what I was saying is, it's like, okay, we got one here, two here, one over here, and it's this cumulative effect that.
Totally get it.
And, and that's why I also wanted to know, and I'll talk about this at the end of the meeting, is, is kind of an update as to where projects are in the queue. So for us sitting up here, we can understand that when another issue comes up, well, hey, listen, remember we approved that one and that's twenty spaces here and that's there, you know? So it's all this, it's this moving target of, of availability. Yes, Mr. Peckins?
With the, like, that queue that you're thinking about, once it goes past a year since you approved it, they have to come back. So if they haven't started, unless they're working through engineering.
So somebody had asked before, is the first come, first served? Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that's a fair question. It's, and again, none of the big projects ever had any pay in lieu. Our pay in lieu have been little. The biggest one was the Roxy.
Right.
When Mr. Wilhelm was here, he talked about, I don't expect people to park in the west deck. They're gonna eat dinner on the east side, so they're gonna affect the east side, maybe park over there. So again, a restaurant, maybe they go to the dinner first. So again, we look at it as a whole system and that's a fair thing. If there's not thirty spaces every single day, every single hour, you got a problem.
I wanna be holistic. And also with respect to the Roxy, for anyone's at home or listening, is the hours of operation played a part in that because it was a evening, you know, so we didn't have to worry about the Roxy taking sixty-seven spots at one in the afternoon. You know what I'm, so it's, it's, it's an overlap. So I, I completely agree and I don't wanna, you know, point that. Ms. Jessica?
Uh, this brings, this brings up equity, equitable decisions, right? So if, like Commissioner Lord brought up, if we're approving one here, three here, but we're not approving thirty, we have guidelines for a reason, right? And we're consistently now saying, well, this one's okay, but this one's, and now we're not following guidelines. So I go back to, this is signaling something, I'd like to understand what. And then I want to revisit our parking requirements because they don't, potentially, maybe they're not appropriate. And then I also feel like if we approve thirty for this one, say, Figo next door, which is about the same height as this building, decides they want to be a restaurant, are we also gonna approve thirty then? And I know it's first come, first served, but that's not equitable, right? And Figo's gonna raise some concerns if they want to be, so like, then you start going to, well, there's like five other buildings, right? Six other, so can they all have thirty? And I think the answer is no, you couldn't fit all, but again, I don't know, I don't have the data. So I just, I, it just starts, the whole thing starts to crumble when you make exceptions over and over again. And the one, three to me that we just passed, to me, don't feel like they would move the needle again without having the data, right? But thirty to me feels like it could move the needle, that could cause some concerns potentially, right? I, again, I don't have the data. But, so that's, that's to me a difference and this is a totally new development where those are existing buildings where it even sounds like some of our recommendations were the cafe to put in the table. Well, now you put in a table, you have to do the park, so like, we're asking them to do stuff. So to me, they're a little bit different request than the brand-new development, but.
Sure.
But that's my thoughts.
Mr. Kenzick?
Yeah, Mr. Band, if you would clarify something. You said we have eighteen hundred and eighty-four spots in the city, but we're currently short twenty-one hundred?
Sixty-four, yeah.
So what you're saying is in total, we need something like four thousand?
That would be correct. So the city operates in a deficit of two thousand one hundred, even more now with new developments, but back three years ago. And don't have an issue. That's because they're not all used at the same time. That's if everybody was using all their required parking all the time, you would, you would have no. You'd be short two thousand one hundred sixty-four. So it's, again, it's a planning model that time of day, use, hours of operation, not easy, so.
So my view is, is if you can get us that information, I think, and again, I may.
Well, there's a motion on the floor, I guess.
No, 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 no.
So.
So could I ask, could we, um, specifically, how, what would be your zone of influence? So would it be the deck, which is proximity, which they use to their advantage? And the lot to the south, those two lots, hour by hour, day by day, month by month? That would be the data? Or are you gonna anticipate, because it's a restaurant, you want to know the west side of Main Street also, is that?
Well, I would, maybe, what information did the city use?
We used the two proximity.
Okay, so I would, I would use that as my benchmark and say, okay, if the city used this to justify that it was acceptable, then that's what I would want to know. And again, I may depart just briefly from the mayor's comment, but my own view is that if the data comes back and supports the city can absorb these thirty spots based on the hours of operation, based on these locations proximity, I, I think, at least I have a hard time saying, no, we can't approve it because that's what the numbers are. And, you know, for like, we're gonna trust the science. So, so that's my personal view on that, so I would appreciate that.
In, in which case, Commissioner Lord had made, I guess, an implication of adding certain requests to a motion such as the brickwork, the herringbone, for example, on the south and west entrances, would certainly appeal to me. Are, are we able to make those types of requests in this situation through a motion?
Because there was dialogue and the, and the petitioner said he thought it was a good idea. So that's, you're not demanding that, you asked that and he agreed to it, right, Vidya?
You're on mute, Vidya?
Yes.
Thank you.
If the planning commission chooses to make a motion for approval, you can absolutely add the architectural details, planters, having seasonal plants in there, making sure the barrier-free accessible space is the first space next to the east entrance. You could place all of those as conditions as enumerated in our August twenty-sixth letter. They are well within reason of psych plan approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think appropriate would be to ask for a tabling another month to get the parking data and we'll get you that.
Okay, is that a problem with a sixty-day requirement?
That's something the commissioner can't, or the chairperson can't do, right? It would have to be from someone else, or do I have the ability to do it?
That's a good, well, that's attorney Krot that, I don't know.
I, I, I always feel it's better to have not the person acting as the chair make the motion. I think there's enough support that the, uh, vice chair does not need to make that motion. I don't think there's anything prohibiting that, but.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the question I had was that, I thought we had to vote tonight.
No, not as long as you're in, uh, negotiation, it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, if you were just gonna say, we're, we're not gonna take any action, but you are taking action.
The clock says take it.
Asking for more data.
Yep.
Yeah.
You always, you can do that as long as you need it and so just, it is.
So just to make sure everyone understands the process, the idea is, is that we would ask city administration for supplemental data concerning parking capacity in the deck and the west lot to support the city's viewpoint that we could absorb this thirty, uh, parking space in Lou. Mr. Lord?
Does it make sense to have them give just a brief presentation on parking throughout the city rather than just the specific, because it might come up next month? So that way at least we're educated with how they're going. What, what I would like to do is be able to trust that they're looking at the data and giving us an appropriate recommendation, just like when they're doing engineering and Vidya's doing planning. We don't need to necessarily get in the weeds of all those decisions, in my opinion. We need to, now, if we question some of that, I mean, I visit Rochester all the time. Where my wife and I are down at, having dinner there all the time. And I, I can't think of any time where I'm just driving around circling, not, unable to find a parking space down there. Doesn't mean that's not a lot of cars, doesn't mean that you might not have the perfect parking space, but it's there. And so that's a little bit of a gut check for me. Now, if that, if they were telling me everything's fine and I was having all kinds of problems, then I might question it.
Sure.
But given what I've heard tonight and if there's a presentation that we're all comfortable with next time, I for one would feel comfortable if they're telling me that there's enough parking to support whatever application comes with, with a payment in lieu.
And in theory, at some point, just like in the past, we will get to a parking problem. That's why we had to spend twelve million dollars to build decks. We knew we were at a problem, it felt like a problem. The businesses said, we're gonna pay twenty-five percent the first year and.
Right.
So it became an issue. It's not an issue right now, but the data is there. We can do the whole, we can do both. We could break it down to this particular ask, those two lots that we used our data on. And then a heat map of the entire city is, that's, it's a computer problem, that's the beauty of the system that we have. We can get you all that and we will get you all that.
Deck's almost paid off too.
Yeah.
Okay. So if anyone wants to make a motion to table, I will certainly entertain.
Can I just ask one last question?
Of course you can.
Are we asking the petitioner to come back with any revised material or information based on some of the things that we've discussed or?
I mean, if, they can if they want to. I don't know if it necessarily is efficient to say, hey, we heard what you said at the October seventh meeting, we implemented some of those changes. But I don't want the applicant to have to spend a whole bunch of time and money on revised drawings and resubmit everything, so.
Nor do I, I just wanted to make sure that if they do come back, that we're not gonna be asking for.
That would be my.
Where's the revised drawings?
That would be my preference, Mr. Banda, but.
And to the mayor's point, it was asked, would you consider doing something different? And they, it was up to them to make that decision, so.
It'll be up to them. Did you have a question?
No.
No, okay. All right.
Just wanna make a motion to table.
So I just need a motion to table based on the discussion that we've had.
Did you make one?
I don't think there's been a proper motion yet, yeah.
No.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, so we have a motion to table in order for the city to provide the parking information that the planning commission has asked for.
Support.
Mr. Mayor supports, okay, discussion. None having been heard, Mr. Peckins?
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klauser.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And is it possible to get that information a little bit before we normally get our packets?
Yeah, I don't know how digestible without explanation, but absolutely.
Okay, and if we get him, we can reach out to you directly?
I was just gonna say, yeah, we'll get you the data and then it might need a map drawn up there and.
Understood. Only because if we get him on Thursday, your phone will be pulling off the hook. Okay, thank you very much, thank you to the applicant, okay? Thank you, everyone.
I think we have a parking meeting, you said, coming up.
And we do too, so we can bring that up.
Parking committee.
The bigger picture, are we, is there, what's the pressure like from the community? Do people say it? We haven't heard it yet, but someday it's gonna happen, you know that, so.
It's a tipping point, right?
Okay.
Reflection point.
We're gonna go to six B? Consideration of two twenty-three South Main Street. You ready for this? Request for payment in lieu of parking requirements. So this is a request to set up public hearing. All right, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, so, um, let's go straight forward here. So this is a request for three spaces. Again, it was the former Fieldstone Winery. In our parking calculation, when we did this in twenty fifteen, we designated that as a retail operation, not a bar, not, because they didn't have a Class C liquor license, so they made wine, they did tastings, things like that. So they were, uh, their parking was calculated like a general retailer. They were selling wine, even though it was by the glass, so one to two hundred. So the gentleman came in and we'll, we'll have him, um, explain who he is and his operation and the depth, the way we saw the floor plans and the use becomes a restaurant. So that restaurant calculation, again, grandfathering retail, the restaurant was a shortage of three spaces. Parking lot right behind them, again, we looked at the data. It's, it's well-used, but again, at three spaces, it didn't overburden that, um, situation. And then just a little bit kitty-corner is the brunch house lot. Great in the mornings, weekends, um, full, but rest of the day, not necessarily full. So endless fee parking. I'll, I'll let them, if you don't mind, the petitioner explain.
Yeah.
What their use is and where they're coming from and why they chose that spot and they feel like that's a good spot that would have parking even though it was short three.
Wonderful, is the petitioner here? Is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, step on up to the lectern, please.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Name and address for the record, please.
It's, uh, two, two, three, Main Street.
And your name?
Bilal, B-I-L-A-L.
Okay. You heard the conversation about the parking in Lou, right?
Yeah.
Walk into a buzz off, yeah.
Hakim, H-A-K-I-M.
Wonderful. Okay.
So, uh, we are, um, we're really excited to open a, uh, premium coffee shop, Moka. And, uh, we're, we do have, uh, an other location that's about to open in a month. And, uh, in a week, we have a location in, uh, west downtown Dearborn. We have a couple of locations in Kentucky as well and those other locations, uh, they're in the process. We are introducing, um, mostly international coffee. And also we're introducing, uh, international desserts. It's gonna be European, Middle Eastern and from all over, just to give a taste from every continent, I guess, something different. And, um, we, we, we did design a, uh, really, um, comfortable, uh, interior as well, just to bring a new, uh, earthy look, uh, more comfortable, you know, uh, interior to, to sit and, and actually enjoy something different than just modern stuff.
What do you anticipate your hours of operation to be?
We look from nine to nine.
Monday through Fri- or seven days a week?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Give or take an hour or two just based on.
Of course.
That's what I was gonna ask, if, if some of the places like Desert Oasis, people camp out and work there and, 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 uh, Cafe three sixteen, same thing, other places, does that, others want to turn it over? So they don't necessarily say this is a workspace, we have the workspace there. So what's your concept on that? Is it, could people stay and work there if they'd want to or just, to stay in, like, set up a shop and stay there for five hours?
Uh, I don't think you would, it's not. It's more, you know, half an hour, hour.
Gotcha. Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner?
Tonight, we're just asking to set the public hearing.
Yep, just set it for public hearing. Okay, so tonight, all we would be doing is setting, uh, this for a public hearing. And similar to what we did for, uh, the lineup for one oh seventy-second, same thing, I would open it up. Anyone who had an objection would state their objection and we close it, but this is very, um.
So I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
All right, we have a motion, is there support?
Support.
Mr. Lawrence, support, okay, discussion? None being had, okay, Mr. Peckins, please.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klauser.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
And then you will have the parking data right in front of you at, at meetings, so you should be able to see that at the same time, so that's good for you, so. Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir, all right, we'll see you next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, line item number C here. Consideration of six thirty, Main Street, Paul's on Main. This is a request for site plan approval for modifications to existing patio structure and the installation of a new pergola. This is a request for public hearing, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, so Vidya's going to go over the plan, um, Paul's has been a part of this community for a long time, and in talking with Paul, we go in there and he's always, he does not own the building, and I, last time I was in there, I was talking to him about it, and, and he's willing to make that investment in the building, to change the whole look of the building, inside and outside, while not lose, according to Paul, not losing the, who he stands and what he stands for, so. Um, it's a, uh, an improvement to the property. In that same shopping center, Cottage Inn is not going in, they are carryout only. They will not have tables and chairs, because you wanna see a parking lot that's overused, and there is no other public parking anywhere, so this would not require any more parking. So, he's not changing the footprint, the way he operates business. It's really a facade change, and the pergola at the entrance point is what triggered that coming forward to planning commission.
Kind of speaks of being where like the floor stays?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Yeah, they're taking the women, there's a women's, um, workout space there, so they're taking the floor stays, and then Cottage Inn will take the rest of them.
Okay, gotcha.
Take out them.
And they're, they're struggling with signage right now, and I can't let them have a roof sign, so they're looking at coming in for a facade change to the whole building, so they can ma- make a manser, so that they could get a sign up there, but, uh, but this would not affect Paul's.
Gotcha, okay, is the petitioner here? You wanna come up for a second, please? I know there were some questions that some of the other commissioners had, so.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to just present the project?
Oh, yeah, you know what? Young man, have a seat, I'm gonna have Yes, I'm so sorry, I did not mean to overlook you, Vidya.
No problem.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Floor is yours.
Nick pretty much summarized it, but in brief, this project is before you for basically a facade change. I will share the screen. This project is basically for Paul's on Main, it is located on the east side of Main Street, just north of Old Town Road and Paint Creek Trail. The site is Zoned B one. The existing restaurant and the outdoor patio have already been approved by the planning commission previously, so no new site plan approval or special exception approval for the outdoor dining is required. What the applicant is doing is basically replacing the existing red awnings and the striped awnings on this building with this new canopy system. I would like to point out that at the time I did my review letter, I did not have the elevations that are before you on the screen. I had only a copy of the site plan, so I did not have an opportunity to reflect on the drawings. This drawing pretty much addresses all of the items that I have listed in my letter, so I'll just briefly summarize what they are doing. They're proposing to remove the main red awning shown over the outdoor dining area and replace it with a standing seam metal roof. They are replacing a series of striped awnings over here with a new metal awning. The one thing they did state is they are replacing the canopies above the main tower entrance with a solid insulated patio system. I'm unclear what exactly that means, because they're basically replacing these awnings. I don't know what a solid patio system over here is. They're also adding a new pergola on top of the main, uh, entrance. This is called as an operable pergola. It basically is a screen that is latched on top. If you would, if you would look at this pergola structure, it is latched on top and can be removed and retracted, like a retractable awning. So, I would like the applicant to just explain to the planning commission, why do you need a retractable pergola, when a pergola by itself is an open structure? It is an open ladder structure. They have presented a colored rendering, as we had requested before the planning commission, and the clearance under the pergola is eight feet, which meets the pedestrian clearance requirement per ordinance. Uh, at this time, they are planning to replace the monument sign with a new sign of the same size. However, the sign needs to be submitted to Nick for approval prior to installation to make sure it still meets the ordinance requirements. Basically, this is a facade update for the building itself, and we believe the colors are very different than the existing red, but definitely give the building new life and enhance its appearance. It would be a recommendation that the planning commission place this for consideration of site plan approval on your next available agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will point out that we were having dinner there one night, and I was with Chief John, and we talked about drawings are kinda getting seedy, and the red lights, some of the bulbs are burned out, so that kinda started this conversation like a year ago, and Paul's like, all the red lights will come off the top, and then all the awnings that are faded, um, that were timed to replace, he just decided to go this route, which is great, so.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for Vidya? Mr. Kensick?
Yeah, um, Mr. Banda may have just answered my question about the lights, but there is an awning on the front of the building that faces Main Street, and I may have overlooked it, but I did not see that addressed anywhere on the site plan or in any of the other documentation.
Yeah, I think it's just coming off.
And just a different facade, right, where she's pointing at right there?
Correct.
Yeah.
It looks like it's also being replaced with a metal awning canopy, but you're correct, it's not clearly labeled on the site plan or elevation, and it probably should. I believe all the canopies are being replaced with a metal awning system for consistency.
Okay, and then, uh, another question is the trim at the very top of the building, um, is that's it, it doesn't look like it's the same as what's on the, uh, current picture. Is that being changed or just, uh, painted?
Yeah, so, we can ask him that.
And then likewise, with the paneling that goes, um, um, in, in the front and the back of the building, currently it's like a beige and a light green, is that color scheme also gonna change?
Site plan does not include, the elevations don't include any labels about the cement panels or the top, uh, coping being painted, but that is a very good question for the applicant to clarify, because you're correct, Mr. Kensick, the color scheme is definitely different than what currently is on the building. So, if the colors are being updated, it is important to actually label that on the elevations, too.
If I may, I know Paul has just recently met with the designer for the whole facade as far as the existing panels to be painted along with the, uh, the brick to coordinate with the new colors for the awnings.
So, we would ask you to pass that on to Paul, that he would reflect on the drawings?
Yes.
And resubmit those as quick as possible?
Yes, and that was, yeah, done with the architect, so.
Before before we get too far, would you please state your name for the record, please?
Uh, I'm Mark Malloy, All Seasons Sunrooms, fifty-five East Long Lake, Troy, Michigan.
Okay, and you're the contractor for this job?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you, do you know about the pergola?
Uh, yeah, so the pergola, it, it, she spoke, it retracts, it, it, it's an operable pergola. They have fins, so it opens and closes with a integrated gutter system. Um, and it's going basically over the footprint of the entrance there, which is roughly fourteen by fifteen. Um, a lot of, you know, older people coming in and out of there, and it's, it's open to the elements there, and it's gonna give them some reprieve there, so, um, she also mentioned something about, uh, um, insulated panels are going over the existing atrium, and then they're gonna have standing seam on those, they're referred to as SIPs, or structurally insulated panels, over the, um, uh, existing atrium there. And then all of the canopies that currently have canvas on them will have the standing seam.
So, they wanna make sure that one in the front reflects the
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Kensick.
One last question, um, the current awnings, they were red, in fact, this is a dated picture, and they basically all faded to maybe I, uh, is there any specs, specs available in terms of how long the color is going to last on the new awnings?
They, you know, the manufacturer of the standing seam is a commercial application, and they claim it's seventy-five years. Now, I, I know I won't be around to test that, but, uh,
The mayor will be, the mayor will still be
He'll service the work.
I was waiting for, I was waiting for that, right?
You see them all over town, and you really don't see any evidence of them fading, both across the street where the Hungry Howies is, and over there where, um, um, the old Bill Bruce's building is there, so. I, I, I think it'll be a great addition to his, his building, especially with the faded, you know, the faded canvas.
Wonderful, okay, so we would be looking from the Commissioners, uh, someone to make a request, a motion to set this for, uh, public hearing, so. Mr. Kensick, who's gonna make a motion to set this for public hearing, is there support?
Support.
I'm sorry, okay, Mr. Bachman, discussion, anyone? Uh, Mr. Peckins, the roll call, please.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klauser.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir, you'll work with the city, and we'll see you next meeting, okay?
So, we'll get some revised drawings quick, keep you on schedule, so, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, consideration of five hundred East Second Street. This is a request for site plan approval for an addition of a covering for the main walkway. Vidya, this is all you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
This is a very simple project, it is a project by Rara on, uh, East Second Street. Basically, this is a building that has come before the planning commission on multiple occasions for site plan approval. First, it came for improvements to this building, and a few years ago, for use of this building as an expansion for classes taken by Rara. So, this site has gone through the site plan process not so long ago. At this time, they are proposing to put a sloped awning or a cover over the main entrance to the building. Right now, when you exit the Rara building, there is a cement, uh, platform over here, and then a ramp that goes down to the crosshatch area, and this is fully exposed to the elements. So, Rara is planning to put a proposed, uh, canopy on top of this area. So, the sketch plan basically shows it as a forty-two foot by sixteen foot blue metal cover over the main entrance, and the blue color is basically to match whatever is the wall paint color on these two facades. The roof is shown with an eight-foot pedestrian clearance. Uh, the rendering actually, they have submitted a rendering with the packet, I did not see a sample included in your packet, however, it was submitted in the packet that I reviewed. It basically showed a metal awning with, uh, wood ceiling underneath it. So, just wanted clarification from the applicant if they do in fact plan to install a wood ceiling on the underside of the metal roof, like it's done in some outdoor values. So, the rendering also need, the rendering that was provided, it should be included in the next planning commission packet and should accurately reflect the existing colors of the building. So, the roof of this awning is actually sloped, so any snow that piles in over here is going to slide off and fall onto this area. Just wanted some clarification from the applicant on how they are going to make sure that the snow doesn't fall exactly on the ramp where the barrier-free access of the beach has had to come up, because the way the awning is designed, all of the snow is going to fall right on the ramp or in this area. So, there should be a plan to keep the ramp area clear in the event that there's heavy snowfall and the snow slides off the roof. Also, clarification if any new light fixtures are going to be installed under the canopy, because there is a light fixture on this wall, but it's very high up on the wall, and when this awning is put, that light is going to shine on top of the awning, not below it, so the underside of the canopy is going to be dark. So, we also need to know whether there's gonna be any other new probably wall light fixture installed, so that the area is well illuminated. No new signage, landscaping, or parking changes are part of this proposal. So, our recommendation is for the planning commission to place this for consideration of public hearing at your next meeting, and for consideration of site plan approval, subject to the applicant clarifying snow removal of the ramp, and updated rendering of the awning and the building colors, and also clarification regarding a light fixture. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vidya, Mr. Banda?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you very, very much, very insightful. So, what we're gonna recommend is heat tape over that awning, and then just, even maybe at Paul's, if it doesn't have a eve on it, and then get it away from that side, cause that's been a problem when you don't think about things like that, so that's a good catch, we'll do that. I would ask if, in the next month, if you do schedules for public hearing, at staff meetings, staff brought up the fact that it hasn't happened a lot lately, but it does happen that when you come down Letica, we get complaints that they have extremely bright floodlights. I understand why, to keep their parking lot lit at night. Mr. Lawrence is in the audience here, and, and he owns the building across the street.
Right.
So, they were approved back in the day, we would not allow those today, they're, they're really bright. So, maybe if the Plankwisters, at night, take a look, that's something, because they triggered site plan approval, we could ask them to bring them to today's standards down, maybe have them aim down for the parking lot. They chose not to put lots in, um, on poles, so they blast from the building out a football field. It's really bright, so I think that would be under consideration, if you all would take a chance to look at that, if you get a chance. Um, we could bring that up. The petitioner's not here, Jeremy talked to them today, they were told to come tonight, so, um, but we can pass that on to them about the snow removal, the light packs, things like that, and
Sure.
if, if you wanna hear them next month, so.
All right, before we do that, Commissioners, any questions for Vidya or Mr. Banda?
I have a question for Mr. Banda, and I can attest to what you just said about those lights, very, very bright. I think that'd be a great opportunity for us to, to do. Do, do you happen to know why, um, they wanna put this in? I'm curious if it has anything to do with the drainage issue on that, um, landing?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it does as much of that, as there's people waiting for classes a lot of times, and they're out the door, waiting for, when they sign, do the signups in the fall, and I think a bunch of people are complaining about, we, we can't even get out of the weather, so. It doesn't hold a lot of people, but I think that was more why, um, David Word talked about this, just to number one, I also, I know the secondary identified that as the front of the building. People are confused where to go in, so that really will focus on, that, we like that idea, get some from the parking lot, hey, go to the front door, when you're there, you're a bit protected. It's kinda like the same reason Paul's putting some there. At some given days, snow, dripping, whatever, it's, it's a pain, but, you know, I know David brought up that it will identify this now, because that's their sole building, as the main entrance to the building.
Yeah, they feel bad when little kids have to wait outside in the snow for not covered, so.
And they did put up the hammock park, and they went to city council
Oh, did they?
Oh, it's awesome, people are really enjoying it, they're looking to put a mural on the back, so they've done some significant upgrades to the park.
Excellent, um, is the applicant here, or you said he's not here, okay?
They were invited.
Okay, Scott owns the building, though, obviously.
No, Scott owns across the street.
Oh, I'm sorry, across the street, okay, that's right. Okay, um, so we would be looking for a motion to just set this for, uh, site plan approval?
Yeah, public hearing, yeah.
Public hearing, yeah.
So moved.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Mr. Bachman, discussion, none, Mr. Peckins, roll call, please.
Hauser.
Yes.
Bixson.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klauser.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Lloyd.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
All right, and, uh, that takes us now to line item number seven miscellaneous, Mr. Banda.
So, um, you guys have been busy the last quite a bit of time, heavy agendas, so, which is at the detriment to the last two districts and the zoning ordinance, so we can get to RM and RM one. So, in the past, we've had second meetings, um, to just do that, because we need to get that done before we can have this joint meeting with city council and, and this body to talk about the next steps in getting this master plan approved, or what we wanna move forward. We wait too much longer, and we're gonna be another five years into a master plan, and we wanna get this wrapped up, so. Question would be, would you entertain a second meeting in October? We know a couple can't make it already, I believe.
I haven't asked about that.
Oh, the, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That was just at this meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so, if we could pick, we, usually it was on a Thursday night, the third Thursday was good for staff, but if it's possible, but if not, I mean, we could put it on the next agenda, but, um, we're just asking.
I know, I will be in Cincinnati the twenty-fourth, and I think Halloween is the Thursday after, so.
Third Thursday is seventeen, that's the next one.
The third Thursday is seventeen.
Oh, I'll, I'll be out of the country then, so, yeah, for, I'm sorry, for, for me, October's not gonna work, but any time in November, except for Thanksgiving, I'd be happy.
This month is a little weird because we had that extra Monday, so that third Thursday's coming up quicker.
I mean, or, or we just stay an extra half an hour at the end of the next meeting and get into those two districts, that's, that's the key, we need to get those two looked at. And there should be some discussion, those aren't necessarily pushover districts, so, um.
What's the agenda like?
Right now, it'd just be what we scheduled tonight for public hearings.
Yep, because the.
Maybe that's the way to do it.
I think so.
The deadline is the ninth, uh, so in two days to get me plans, and I haven't had any other than these revisions.
Just, we'll stay a little bit longer just to get that done.
That's fine.
So we would have a regular meeting on the fourth.
Right.
It would just be on the miscellaneous.
Yeah, that works.
That's fine, okay, good.
Did you, you good with that? Okay, yep. Okay.
Just closing.
Just a question, do we, um, I know that the, especially the RM one, the districts and the master plan have um, drawn lots of questions and interest from the public, how do we advertise that this is the meeting to attend to provide that feedback?
So it would be on the agenda the first time, but you would set public hearings again for those two districts a month for that, so then everybody would get notified through the paper, we, it's not individual homes and stuff, but it would be on our website, there are public hearings to do with these two zoning classifications, so.
Okay.
Just to help with that, we have a public hearing notification on our website, so people can sign up for that. And then whenever I do a public hearing related to Planning Commission, you get a text, or you get an email, you can sign up for either of them, and it does a link to the public hearing as well as the packet.
Yeah, people use it.
They do.
Good.
Any questions for Mr. Banda about that zoning? I saw the chief come a little bit closer to the lectern, so I get the sense he's.
Just to speed the process up, um, a two-year program that we've been working on, I finally have some results. Um, in two thousand and twenty-two, the Postmaster General submitted a project to, uh, the federal government, he got notified, um, a few months ago, if you've noticed some changes at the, uh, the post office. They now have new concrete drives, um, they started, uh, on last week and they started to cut curb. Some of the curb will come out and get redone, and believe it or not, there'll be a new surface parking lot at the park, at the post office.
Take them five years to stripe it, but that's.
If nothing else, Jeremy and I will go help them out.
Do the chalk lines.
The Postmaster did tell me that there will be some inconvenience for a part of the time, um, that they'll go ahead and, uh, open up the parking on the south side of the parking lot where the employees are parking, they'll make that available. So there will be some inconvenience for the, uh, customers to have to walk from that parking lot that's right there to the front of the building, but we should see, uh, a new parking lot in the front of the post office very soon, Mr. Chippers.
Thank you very much, Chief, any questions for the chief about the post office? No, okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Band, anything further in your end?
Uh, I'm anticipating you're gonna ask me about projects.
I am, well, here's what I was thinking, is we often, I think every one of us gets questioned regularly, hey, what's going on with this and what's going on with that? And, you know, one sticks out in my mind, well, there's several, but every time I go to Hollywood Market, I see the brownstones on Main Street there, and the two look good. What's his plan for the other ones? And we talked about this in the past.
So, and actually the mayor brought this up at, at City Council meeting, and we did the, through the DDA, we pay as part of my salary, I do the year, uh, once a year, this time it was every two years, um, about all the projects going out of town, we go over them rapidly. Um, and I try to do that at City Council one day, would like that, we, I do it after the ZBA meetings, we go off the record so that we don't have to take minutes on it, and then I just tell them what's going on.
Sure.
No different than that here, um, but on that specific site, so Mr. Schneider did sell one of the units, that triggered for him financially, you know the whole story, the, the wind took down his buildings, he lost. He hung in there and found new financing, so those two are, uh, the first two buildings are done, so. We went to and said, appreciate all the strife that you've had on this, but the people that live in that area for three and a half years have been living with that, so. He's been instructed that if you can't dig the basements, which I don't believe he can, buy frost, then you have to take down the fence, grade the lot, it's kinda like our bond that we've put up before, and bake everything flat and green until next spring. You might have to dig it out again, but all the junk off the site and make it look like just those two buildings are there, so. His intent is to keep going with the next three, two buildings and get them done next spring, but we're not gonna wait all winter to leave it like that, so. Um, good news and bad news, I'm glad that he sold the one, and actually he was an inspiration for Dulusa, that came across the street with the condo, so. I think the demand's there, but, um, we make, we go around every site right now, Mr. McClure, Chief John, um, we go around to all construction sites right now and say, it's October, and by November fifteenth, you need permanent sidewalks in or, or hard surface sidewalks in front of every home that's being worked on, every commercial property that's being worked on, we need to be buttoned up for the winter. Um, if you have to rip them out in the spring, that, it's, I'm sorry, but we can't just leave the place and rip shots, especially on Main Street. So Mr. Schneider did pour the Main Street sidewalk, didn't want to, because he's probably gonna break it up next time, he digs a hole, but at that point, he has to, so. Um, so that one, and then we saw work on the elevator has started, so they, uh, got through Eagle, and, and that's good, so they, right now it's all clean up and they just went off for their bid package to get the actual construction started. They're gonna do the elevator proper first, they wanna get that done. So people, it really will be a sales office for them, I think, as they're building out the rest of the units. Mr. Randazzo at First Street and Walnut got a million dollar grant, our fourth one, through Eagle, but through the county, so. For Brownfield, we already had our designated, um, allotment of million dollar grants for the, the granary, um, for Rewalt's headquarters, uh, Solaronics is working on theirs right now, and then Randazzo went through the county, and the county will take care of this, it won't be a city, Brownfield, the county will do all the regulating and everything. That will trigger that project to go on, so we're looking for a construction meeting soon to find out how we're gonna handle the dirt and get things moved around. We are just completing bridge repair on all the bridges in town, so pedestrian and motorized vehicles, you've seen some low, low lane closures like on Ludlow, on front of the road park, all our bridge maintenance is done, um, we keep running into, I don't know what people think it's okay to graffiti as severe as they're doing right now, they're wiping out the upper west deck, two walls, hundred yards of graffiti that was the most inappropriate language and not nowhere in this country should it be what was written on there, and they're doing that. We don't know if they rappelled on the building, we checked every camera, steriles, can't catch them, and they're wiping out our bridges right now, we paint them, they do it again, we don't know who and why, what they're, what's going on, so we're trying our best, they've wrecked every sign in the park. We just had the DDA paid, they have all the electrical boxes painted green, because they're all graffitied and it's just an ongoing battle, so I, I don't know what's going on here, but we're doing our best to handle that, so. Um, but most, if the construction projects aren't wrapping up, we make sure they look good for the winter to get through, especially in the residential areas, 'cause there's quite a bit going on, so, and then Solaronics is still working through all their paperwork with, uh, with Eagle for that, Pfizer is getting, getting through their building plans right now, Par finished their project, so some of these big ones maybe will finally start going, um.
Thank you for the update, any questions for City Manager based on the updates there? Okay, um, thank you, Mr. B, anything else or are we good? Okay, alright, um, public comment, any final public comment from anyone based on what we've heard? Rose, anyone online?
No one's online.
No, okay, well, with that, um, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone, that was a very, very good meeting, thank you.
Thank you.